Then Paul's meeting order, please.
Karen, Karen, Lee.
Here.
Sterling.
Here.
John, Darren, Scott.
Here.
State of the pledge. Pardon me, if this is too quiet.
I'm being registered. And to the public, which is my name is. My name is. And it was all.
You have quiet conversation only on the baltus.
Okay. I want to be. Say our go. We were all. Sixty nine. When we would do that. Most. Don't be sad. I think this is. It was. Yeah. Yeah. Usually. This was. And.
For the Sterling Town Board, Mrs. Cooper, MMC Sterling Town Clerk. I have a resolution to open the public hearing.
I made that resolution.
Well, it's very good.
Karen, yes, Lee.
Yeah.
Sterling.
Yeah.
John, yes.
Yes.
That's very good.
Karen, yes, Lee.
Yeah.
Sterling.
Yeah.
John, yes.
Yes. Senator. Anybody like privilege of the floor? We have Carl here from County Water and Sewer. So I'd like, if anybody's got questions, you can say your last name. I don't want to butcher it.
Ryan D.
Ryan D.
You want to spell that for me?
R I N D. F L E. I S. C H.
Yeah, we're watching that, too.
Yeah.
C or K?
K.
Everybody's late this afternoon. Got copy of the proposed contract for Water District Number Three.
Oh, three, yes, I'm sorry.
Um, so if anybody had any questions or not, but Carl was kind enough to come up this evening.
I do have some passion, but they're not formulated. We just.
Okay, yeah.
You know, like.
Yeah, we just.
I think we, yeah.
Um.
We will definitely be in touch.
Yeah, I think one question Carl was the, send it to towns to buy inventory and supplies. Is there, I mean, is that a list of what you think we should have that you would give us?
You know.
Or you order and we pay for it?
That's usually what we do.
Okay.
Uh, you know, once we get, get activated with what, what's necessary, what we usually do is if we have a virtue repair, we'll bring our materials from our home with us. Like for the town of Fleming at the mark, and then just have the town replace this.
Okay.
And materials used.
Okay.
It's, um, it's, it's help because, um, it's, it's hard for a town to ever have enough of anything. And, and, um, depending on where your budget's at, it's also gonna be a little cumbersome financially also.
Right.
So as a rule, we just kind of keep a good inventory at the water authority because we have quite a lot of pipes in the ground. So that, that's always been worked out pretty well.
Okay.
So does that hold the town responsible for the actual, uh, instruction of the line? If it needs a repair, I mean, do we do the digging and the excavating?
And all that.
On water, or you do all that?
Okay, so you take care of that now?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Own it, yes.
Yeah, and we did have, um, last week, two weeks ago, there was a break underneath 104A up here right. The highway garage, um, her, herself, I guess, contacted Carl, their guys came up Monday morning and, um, I think did a great job. Hurt the guy you're impressed with already and what?
Yeah, we're good.
I think. Yeah, um, they got a lot of knowledge, you know.
Right.
Call up and hey, the waters, we can underneath their state road, how do we fix it? He's just, oh, he'll fix it.
Well, so. But that's a question. I have a question. So what happens if, if that break happens, and this happened on a Thursday or Friday, I believe? And I think it was a Thursday afternoon, but we actually record, the town recognized it. What happens if the water washes out under the road? Who's responsible at that time?
You gotta fix it.
Yeah.
Does the town be?
But it's a state.
Yeah.
Well, it, that, the, the state looks as if we fix it.
Who fixes it?
Well, we did, we would fix it and build the town for whatever material and time we have involved in.
Um, if that had, if this hadn't been the highway garage, it had been a residence, we could have had that fixed. We would wait until Monday because it was the highway garage where he was there anyways.
Yeah, yeah.
If that had been a residence, emergency situation, that would have been the same.
Yeah, for, fortunately, you know, Eric from the Village Fair Haven dug down and got the line shut off. It wasn't an emergency. In fact, it ain't, it would be a couple created out of water. There's, there's, it's got.
No, I, I, I understand that.
Right, but, but if, if your waterline damages property, you're kind of hoping repair, you know, make the necessary repairs and repairing a damage that gets created.
But if it's under the road, then you don't know that it's happening.
Well, then you get ignorance, you know, you don't know what you don't know.
Andy, you, Andy, you have to just order. Okay, sorry. Yeah.
Um, Danny's point, who's on the hook for that repair? You know, like you said, if it happens in, in a, creates a divot in the road or got a bit of hole in the road, and is that the town's responsibility or the state's? Because it's a state road.
Well, if the state owns the road, but in most cases, if it was damage created by the town waterline, you, you would have to cut the road and fill a hole in and fix the blacktop. You, you know, that's part of the water business, right? When you have a water main alongside the highway and you have a break and you wash out part of the state highway, and if it does happen, it's not sure as far as much as you might think, you're, you know, the state's not gonna fix it. You created here that whoever water district is, whether it's a county water line or a county water line or city water line, that you're kind of, you know, that's part of the responsibility you take when you put your lines in the ground.
Okay, I just want to make sure that the town guys are acknowledging that and are prepared to make that kind of repair in an emergency situation. That's all.
Yeah, and.
I'm sure they are.
And, and truth, well, intrudently, most of the U O T guys are, you know, this is nothing unusual for them to do when they're, they'll work with you pretty well. Help you get, taken care of. Most time they'll pitch in and, you know, they want to work back in good shape, too.
Yeah.
Right.
So they help, they just.
So who signs off on a repair when, when the road is completed on a state road? Does the state sign off and say, repair is inspected and complete? Or is it? The town will scare me. When I.
You know, truthfully, I, I've probably done thirty or forty breaks on this long side of state highway. And usually old guys are pretty comfortable and just tell you what they want done, they'll leave. We don't really, anybody sign off anything apart from.
Okay. All right, just thinking of safety concerns.
Well, safety is a big issue on the state highway.
Right. So one, one other question I have is, are there any requirements for the town to have anybody certified in water from the highway department? Or an emergency?
You wouldn't require anybody, any of us to have a license here? Carl?
No, that's.
Yeah, that's what their services, their providing that works. Um, if there's a situation where we have to, you know, you have to shut off water for a day or something like that, that's up to us to notify the customers or do you do that?
We can, we can do that.
You can do that.
Truthfully, uh, I would have to look into it, but in, 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 in there, in a couple of our districts, we have a reverse nine one one. Where.
Okay, yeah.
Are you aware of that? Yeah. Okay, and you know, you know, in, in a perfect world, you, you have a heads up and you have to kind of let people know. It was two, three in the morning and you got a break, you're just shutting things off, fixing the break. And this is what we're talking about a minute ago, the damage, you know, the erosion problems and things like that, you know, so truthfully, everyone saw you have somebody that's mad because they didn't have water for a couple hours, but I think they're good with the bad, you know? Just a necessary evil, I'm afraid.
I think, yeah, I have a question. So who currently is doing the billing and collection for Water District?
Village Department.
Okay, so I'm reading that the town shall be responsible for the billing and collection. Does that mean the town clerk would then be dealing with the billing and the collection?
We have to make that decision whether we have the village department, if anyone, or if we call it.
Is it an option for the village to continue?
That's an option or we have to look at what capacity, um, the town could do. I don't believe the town can bill and collect by the same thing, so whether the town bills or somebody else collects or somebody bills and we collect or something.
We got.
Something we have to look at.
The village has a soft one, so it might be better for the village to fill and then the town.
Yeah, the village has a bill with soft.
I want to know exactly. But you would have to have the program too.
Yeah. Williams, Mr. Williams.
Right. But that's something that we need to decide.
And we. Like this?
Their county could also.
Yeah, we could. Yeah, but we couldn't make arrangements for the county to do as well.
Definitely.
Also. All right, unless you headed in to add, Carl, or?
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming in. Any else want privilege of the floor? Um, Department reports, uh, Kurt, you're going to be here tonight. You had another meeting. We had to go to. He's got his report here. He also wanted me to say, I can't with exact figure he told me, but it was around thirty thousand dollars under budget. And we'll be able to campaign that. They are currently hauling sand out of the gravel bed. Trying to get the salt barn filled up with sand because they can't get any more stone. I guess there's machinery down at the pit. So they're trying to get sand before that salt barn in case things don't come up. Um, he's got self ordered, ordered his new pickup, looking at plows. Anything else I think should be in there? Town clerk? Historian?
Yes, first thing, I hope my name's not in the police block. I made a mistake and unlocked the door and didn't get in and time correct.
I got a phone call. Sorry. I got, I told him, put the plus on and take it away.
Did I? Name, address, phone number, date of birth, the whole nine yards. Looking to see where his hands were going. Plus, there were a lot of witnesses, so it was really embarrassing. Okay, um, I researched so far, found thirty four names. Uh, people that probably will qualify for the veterans mining and Korean War veteran. Got another call this morning, which I will add to research to be certain about other person where, you know, when Lisa tell if I got the name and phone number of Oswego County Ninety Minutes, I called them, they wanted to, unfortunately, Ninety Minutes before they give an estimate of the price. But I could get county law at least one more. Two or not?
I.
It depends on how much, how much it is, okay.
Is it over five thousand? You have to have three.
Two, okay.
Or two? Just two?
Just two, and anything over ten, you'd need three. Something like that, or it's. Oh, I can look, Suzie, okay. Uh, Jamie Rock has for information about the Keel family, which I provided. Um, she had an interview this morning, just had this interment lately. They came in with, oh, two cameras, uh, lighting, um, the pole, uh, microphone, but they forgot the pole, so they borrowed a room from. At least I had, held it next to me until I'm like in the middle of thing.
Did they take your mug shot?
Like, don't hurt.
Very happy. We got hit from the police.
So they, uh, interviewed me for a couple of hours about the history of the Sterling Nature Center. Um, and they were going this afternoon, I think maybe to interview Joan Willat about it, so they're working hard on preparing for their dedication on there with the whole day. Early, way early.
Sure.
That's it.
Thank you. Playboard? Going board of appeals?
If we had an hearing last week to provide appearance for the building of storage building as a primary use on a non-conforming law record um, in the town of Sterling, uh, West Bay Road. So the gentleman, uh, will have to be pursuing a special permit because of our law. And he should be moving forward to that.
Okay. Thank you. Historical society?
Yes. Clark. Um, tomorrow night we have a program with Keith Conroy, and he'll be speaking on a military track. The invitation for the dedication for the boost, which is on September twenty third, start down, they just have a pickup. And the opening for visitors starts to line up. Done with the morning.
Thank you.
More next one.
Hold the course, Matt? Going to course, Matt?
Our pins are starting to pick up a little bit, so see by our report, um, really the only thing outside of the report is tomorrow, I'm meeting with the county department of health. We would be finalized, there would be a close new building, so our kitchen could be open for the weekend. They exert their means of building there. Um, and we did, and we're also, he's got an appointment, um, I'm taking a lot of respectful guests, so. So also tomorrow.
Scott, I have a correct answer. Keith Conroy is going to be talking about the Ellen Disher Edmond.
Oh, really?
Yes. So you're welcome?
Make sure that. What day is that?
Tomorrow night, tomorrow night.
Speaking on what again?
I've got, remind me before you leave, I got, yeah, somebody called today, we're gonna talk to him. Midis. Fire manual, nothing yet. It didn't work without that. Your citizens, the speaker Frank. That's better than alternative. Water District, we met this evening for the meeting, um. Yeah, we got this afternoon, like I said, the proposal for Water District Two. Um, and Water or Water District Three, I want to District Two. Um, Ian notified me by phone last week, he was gonna send an email, I still haven't seen it. Um, we did get approval to go ahead. With the changes to Water District Two, buying water from Aqua Hall. Um, he's waiting, we've gotta give him a proposal for, and I'm on that, which. I'd like to give him the proposal that he gave us for Water District Three. For that, to satisfy that, so he can go with that. We have a meeting July sixth with Sarah's. Scan with USRD. Um, just to go over the changes and talk about that. Um, one of the stipulations though. Is Aqua will not sell water. They cannot have the capacity. They believe to sell water to the Village of Perry even, so with the changes in the proposal. Um, we're only gonna supply at this time. The construction cannot connect to Water District Three at this time. It can connect later after the project's done, but. They will not be able to supply water to the Village of Perry.
So I'm assuming what I'm hearing is a bigger picture. Aqua already provides water to Water District One, right, the Sterling? Okay, and Water District Two is what we're talking about now. And that they could also provide to for Water District Three.
In the future, yeah.
In the future.
But not the village. That'll have to be done after the project's completed, cause there's a scope of the project.
Water District Two. Two project.
Yeah, yep. So hopefully, um, Ian sounded happy that. As all the pieces fall together, then hopefully it should be able to go out to bid, yeah, this late this summer, early fall.
I'm hoping to get a lot more clear answers after our meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
On July sixth?
USRD, yeah, I think the Friday. Right, Friday, July sixth.
Will we have to put it up, uh, to vote again for Water District Two anticipating? That the cost is going to be more than the estimated seven hundred fifty two dollars a year? So it'll get put out to.
Yeah, once the, yeah, once the bids, it'll be after the bids come in, he said. If it goes over that, the initial vote, then it'll have to go to vote again to change. There's a percentage in there.
Is this a time where we could look at possibly having Water District Two include the Sterling Nature Center?
It's, we won't be able to change it. Um, I had a phone conversation with Doug De La Strido last week. Um, they're kind of waiting for us to get the definite, the Water District Two's going in. And they're looking at funding routes through the company, the company is in order to do that, so I think at that time, a combined. Project to start on would be. Um, to get it out to the neutral center.
Excellent, and I assume that we'd also think about the Sterling Renaissance Festival?
I believe so, I've had, I've had calls from residents on. So.
Excellent.
Yeah, I think that would be, they're just kind of waiting, they don't wanna go for the fun even if they don't have it in the hook.
Right, right, I get that, but with this new four point million dollar facility going up.
Yeah.
And the water is, it's sketchy at the Sterling Nature Center.
Well, Doug said they had to scale it back because of the water, so it's too bad the water couldn't come there previously.
Anyway, thank you, Doug, for that.
Do you have any to add to that or?
No, I mean, I'm just waiting for the email to do that, and then after that meeting, I think. We have just like a list of laundry, that's the question, yeah.
Running commission?
Uh, yes, we're meeting, uh, just about every two weeks. And, um. Um, some of the topics we're dealing, we're still dealing with a list. Of potential L U R amendment changes that Lisa Summers had pulled together in May twenty twenty one. Now, we've addressed a number of them, but we still have more. That were recommended by the former co enforcement officer, former highway superintendent, et cetera. So the zoning commission members are working on that, um, to. See if we can get that pulled together, it'll go through the planning board for its review. And then ultimately the town board for the, that has the final authority to make the change. But, uh, yeah, we're not, it'll offer. Topics to work on, but activities and uses, that things like new ones are surfacing. As the planning board members are meeting, planning boards. I'm hearing someone say, oh, we're gonna have to address that topic. So, anyway.
What are the topics that you guys are? Are looking at?
Right now?
Yeah.
Okay, um. Some of the ones, well, I'll go to the ones that we actually researched and adopted, um. A diet, it was recommended to have a diagram that depicted the setbacks. And that was, um, suggested by former co enforcement officer. And I believe our current, um, CEO Jonathan Anna. Thought it would be a good idea as well, so we're trying to put something together. The problem is, a diagram. Is not a word document. It's, it's a graphic, so some of the, um. Details of trying to figure out how to make that happen. The the town of Cato actually has a diagram in its zoning document that seems to meet our needs. But logistically, to take that diagram, which I went and talked to the county planner, Cuban county planner. Who sent me some electronic versions, but not the one that the town of Cato had. So we're trying to find a way to do that, so we can insert a diagram into the document, so that's just one. Um. Stormwater management, a former highway superintendent had an issue with the stormwater management officer. Um, being the highway superintendent. So the zoning commission has researched that. And at the, we're almost at a point where we were gonna recommend. To the town board, the planning board has reviewed it as well, and the town board. And suggest that instead of saying it's the highway superintendent. Who would act as the stormwater management officer, that's Article twenty, by the way, in the L U R. Um, that it be an appointed position done at the annual organizational meeting. Of the town board to appoint either the highway superintendent or the CEO. Instead of having the title in there, so that's one we're working on. I had a verbal conversation with both our current CEO and with our current highway superintendent. And they were okay with doing that way, and when I asked for, can you just put that in writing? And I've not gotten a response where, I don't know if they misunderstood, it doesn't mean it's in concrete, it's just a part of the homework we're doing as a zoning commission. To get this together, then the next step would be to present it to the planning board. And then from the planning board, it would go to the town board, obviously the Cuban county two thirty ninth committee. Our attorney, public hearing on it, et cetera. So though, um, that's another one that we're working on. Um, another, let's see, we have a memo from the V B A. Consider drafting regulations pertaining to requirement of fire lane access for roads that are currently not built for residential use. Yet residents of camps are being constructed. So we're trying to research that to see legally how we deal with fire lanes. Um, last year, what good chunk of the zoning commission's time was working on the. Um, overhead, the wellhead protection overlay district, by the way, so, um. Another issue that's come up is, um. The proposal, the geodesic dome, and we don't address geodesic domes in the land use regulations. Um, and then it's brought up, well, what about tiny homes? Um, so those are some of the things we'll be researching. It doesn't mean the zoning commission is saying, this is what we're gonna do. It just means we're trying to be proactive, looking at what's going on in other communities. And then see what we might wanna look at, short term rental. That's a real common topic that's going on now with planning, training. Um, and, uh, so that's something we might wanna look at, and that short term rentals like Airbnbs, et cetera. Not that the commission's gonna say, this is what we should do. Just get the homework out there and figure it out, so we don't, so we're not reactive. Because I had experiences where village residents would approach me and say, Joan, what are you gonna do? About that place, the the person was a year round resident. And next door, it's an Airbnb or a short term rental, parking is an issue, noise was an issue. All night parties, trash, et cetera. And so, um, obviously the village, we don't have. Uh, authority to regulate the village, but we can be proactive and look at that potentially in town. And you say, we're in the town, Moon Beach might be a place, we might want to look at it, is there a need for looking at that? Once you start having year round residents for short term rentals, it can impact. So, anyway, there are positives to it, but there are negatives as well, so that's another one that we're we're looking at. Um. Anyway, that.
Yeah, no, I just.
Right, another one I kind of put out there was sludge, I put that on, was to, um, fudge dump. And that trigger goes back to, I think it was Butler. When it was being viewed as a place to put sludge. And we don't address that in our document. And that's being proactive, looking, well, some things that could happen in the future. That might not be compatible with our comprehensive plan goals and objectives. So the zoning commission actually does a lot of the footwork on it. To do the research. And then present it to the planning board, obviously town board, Cuban county, et cetera. Did I answer?
Oh, yeah, extensive.
I'll oversay that.
Um, we, uh, it's just because of my schedule and what's happened, we have not yet, um, met. Um, but I believe after the Fourth of July, we will be attacking these.
Employee handbook policies and procedures? Okay, I get a motion to accept the minutes from the May twenty second, twenty twenty three regular meeting? Oh, David? I get a motion to accept the supervisor's report from May twenty twenty three?
I'll make that motion.
So correspondence? Water District. Nature Center, fine. Support. The program. Uh, residuals regarding award for better nature center construction. Any more? Everybody, anything I really wanted to? Boss friends and friends. Open to nature center. The. They changed the name of the fire lane, the. The Ontario Acres Drive.
Yeah, I see that the county approved that.
We got letter interest for Lee, for county parks and trails, letter interest from Bill Kelly.
I'd like to put in my verbal interest for that as well. I was, um, I think I mentioned it.
Anybody see any issue with the? With the new, uh. New nature center in the. Romance being traffic wise? Is anything being done to address the.
Hi, can you address that with Waterberry tomorrow? He's gonna do the same thing. Last year, I think everything went smooth, didn't it? Last year, we received no complaints, I didn't receive any complaints on traffic last year, the staffing was adequate for parking. I will reaffirm with them tomorrow, and I was expecting to follow the same plan.
Whatever they did was great, but I'm just wondering now with this. Through the, uh, improvements to the nature center, if that's gonna be caused another issue with.
I think that won't be open till like this. But definitely next year we need to look at.
Yeah.
And I know, cause I'm on the Sterling Nature Center, like board with the, of the friend's board or whatever. The exact termality is, but, um, that we are looking at having day camps there, but that's. Most of the traffic would be during the week. Not the weekends, so if anything during the summer, it would be. I mean, it would just be regular public, not any, you know. So at at the moment in time, that that should be addressed, I think, for finding any big. Things are, that's something to put in mind.
Then the account statement for New York class, I. Been doing very well then, I guess. Thirty two thousand dollars in interest, that's very.
Is that just in the general pop of first at roads and I?
That's the consolidation.
Right, you're right.
Um, so I think that's. Doing very well.
Right, right, it is.
Yeah, 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 it would've been in the hundreds. Okay, old business. That's kind of go back, goes back on you a little bit, Carl, the flagging of the stormwater. System over on. West Bay Road, that's still, you're still gonna continue and just build that at the rate?
Yeah, yeah, you know, that's something that kind of fits in, you know, you please. And get a day or two's notice, you just make it part of something else you're doing.
Okay.
Do you need me to name them for that?
We will be, right? You'll start calling us for that? And we send out, so it'll go through you. You want us to switch you over, if after we sign the contract, we would switch you over. You want us to switch you over if after we sign the contract, we would switch you over to get the notification instead of day?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and you could notify Jay and I, hope.
Right.
You have your problem to have more people work.
Yeah.
But, but like I said, in those cases with the, with those, you, you, when you get your request, you have two days to respond. So you don't have to stop what you're doing and spend an hour to do it.
Yeah.
You can make it part of tomorrow.
Part of tomorrow, I'll figure out when you're rounds.
Yeah, right.
Okay. It'll be part of the, it'll be, you'll bill us at the same rate as the.
Yeah.
Can we adjust? That's one of the things that we, when we get back here, is adjusted.
You don't want it together. No, because it's.
You gotta bill, right.
Districts.
If, if. Can you bill us separate on the same contract?
We, we can bill you separate. What we do is give an itemized bill. Cause some towns had more than one water district and that become out of appropriate fund. It's the same thing here, right? They were working, uh, like we give my district, try to go, we're gonna do something in district one. You know, those residents should pay that.
Right, yeah, exactly.
True.
So you would get the itemized bill?
Yes, we always heard it.
Right.
I think it not gorgeous. Maybe that contrast could be. Should be the same wording, but.
You had a separate, you had a separate contract usually for each district?
Uh, no, usually it's just with the town, um, but that's something we could work on.
Yeah, we can work on that, yeah.
Yeah.
It might be easier, but.
It'd be a lot easier. Right, but are we talking about water districts or the storm sewer district? Okay. Talking about putting it into the water.
To do the.
People want, we, we need to have the special districts are just their separate. And we, I would prefer a contract that reflects just the, um, so it'd be the west bay road storm.
Yeah.
Water sewer. So we're. Right.
If that's, if that's what the board wants, I'm sure we can do that.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll do that.
All right.
Thank you.
Um, old state road, whatever you got on that, local report trial. Next one, June twenty eighth. Purple money grant, so still, we haven't spent any more of that. Loan contract.
I haven't gotten that yet.
Guy, you haven't got it? Nope.
It's, he signs it, it disappears.
Right.
Can you ask Brian to get it to me?
Yeah.
Or you, you can send it to me?
Yeah, it seems like after.
Because.
Cause I signed it, then I went to Kirk, Kirk signed it.
And then.
And we never got nothing back.
Nothing comes back.
Okay. Dog control. Something to figure out. There's a guy that does Iowa that's different. I think, I need to do is just look through the yellow page or look on their website and see who they use. Because nobody wants to give up that information. Cause they're afraid that they'll do us and not them, which nobody's going to want to do us because we're way up here. Um, I did, I had my dog boarded it, the guy over on. What's his name? I'll sign a fair even there, but he's not interested because he kept his dogs and says you can't. Bring them in because they don't have shots or whatever. We'll look at that. Bring more, so we spoke on that. Fuel bed, you submitted.
Ta-da.
Open that, just one?
Just one.
Okay.
So I'll open them. Okay, so. Well, I guess this is the only one. Sorry. Two dollars. That'd be within differential price of fuel oil, be thirty cents. Uh, diesel. Seventy seven.
Is it virtual?
Yeah.
More vehicles there? Even.
Yeah, is, uh, just over, um, just over four cents. Over. And. And parquet. Of course, when you're. And diesel kerosene, six cents.
Less.
Less.
Than the diet.
Oh, yeah, than the diet, okay. Diet kerosene would be forty-five cents over. Gas would be. And the tube size. And propane would be. Sixty-seven cents over. What was there? There's nothing here, so.
I meant, we're listening to everything, so.
Yeah.
I was just concerned if they did, cause I know sometimes we'll get just the gas and just hopefully they've been everything. Okay, so you would be received.
I got three people to get this, or get the. Specs. And the only one.
Who's our firm, I'm not sure now, but they sign off, so it's.
They're doing that now, right?
Right. Marabato, they want to do it this year, twenty twenty-three. So they didn't.
And then twenty twelve.
Incorrect, and they didn't have it twenty-four. So, but I had two other people who asked for the specs and I can't remember the company it was. And that, it's not coming to me.
So the North Shore River, potato?
They didn't bid, they used to bid, but they don't anymore.
On the way off of the Joe, they're prerogative now, so.
Okay. Position of deputy registrar was approved by the civil service. So new business. Been brought up our attention about the zoning commission. Wanted to ask for discussion, I guess, Joan, Karen asked a question, Joan kind of explained some of the things we're working on.
Uh, who, who put it on there, can I ask?
I do.
Okay.
I was concerned about it, sorry.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, I know there's been a concern of the, um. Logistics, so when the amendments, the content of the LUR. The amendments have been adopted. That's one process. And then the other process is the physical change. Of the land use regulation, which is basically a word document. And I know I talked with Lisa Cooper about it. And it's, it, it is cumbersome. Um, cause I figured, well, can't you just copy and paste? No, it changes the pages, et cetera. So I know that that was a concern that was brought to my attention. And I wasn't aware of how cumbersome that process was. So, but that's something I think we could work on. But that sounds like it might be separate from what you might be.
I had, I had concerns brought to me that you guys were working on changing the wording from storm sewer one words. Storm sewer two words. There's a lot of other people's time, effort. Muddies invested to do something like that. Um, I have spoken with our attorney in the past before this, I haven't spoken to him recently. This has just brought to my attention. He said normally a zoning commission's to dial once, the land use regulations are accepted initially. Um, it's the town board's responsibility to change land use regulations. I think it would be more fitting if there's an issue with something or something basically change at the town board, if you'll say. And, you know, if need be, form a committee for that specific thing. Um, I look at the wellhead protection law. That was. As far as I consider, there was nobody that that affected even, you know, in the, the area. Of the, um, landowners at that effective degree of questioning. Um, to my knowledge, the wellhead protection committee that the town board set up was never questioned or brought in. Um, I don't think, you know. There's three people on the committee that. Oh, or like minded and. Have a, I don't know if it's a general what it is, but. Um, I think that, you know, you've got a list of things there. You know, changing who's the stormwater manager that's been on the docket since twenty-one and it hasn't been done or addressed. I think that's something that the town board could easily address in a meeting or two and do some research. So I don't, I mean, I don't see the legitimacy of it anymore. I don't think it's, um. I think it's one of the things that probably could be streamlined and done away with. I think it's just adds time. Absolutely. The money that's, you know, spread.
And I see it, quite honestly, I'm trying to meet with another town board member to review the financial records. And those records, I don't think we finished year twenty twenty. Did we finish twenty twenty-one? I guess maybe we did.
Yeah.
By twenty twenty-two, I don't know. I just now to say, now we're going to task. Town board members to do the research. Uh, the stormwater management officer, I mean, that was brought to our attention by, as I said, a former highway superintendent. If the current highway superintendent and the CEO said, oh, don't worry about it, leave it the way it is, we could. But we just kind of do our homework and trying to be thorough about it. The thing, the problem with stormwater, actually, there's a discrepancy in our own documents. Sometimes it's one word, sometimes it's two. That is just so minute. And, but if we're changing the document, just make it all the same throughout the document. That, that, that we're not spending tons of hours on that. The stormwater officer though, where it states the highway superintendent. Then that we have spent some time on and we're trying to take care of that loose end.
But I think it's better addressed if the old highway super, or highway superintendent want, didn't want to do it. And the new one said he doesn't have a problem, then.
It's the other way around.
Why change it?
Or is the other way around?
The.
The former highway superintendent Ryan to do it, this one does not, the last two.
The last two, okay. I thought Joan just said she spoke with the current one, when he said he would have a problem.
Okay, let me qualify, he doesn't, right. So what it is, he doesn't have a problem with changing it. So it's just stormwater management officer in article twenty of the document. And not indicate highway superintendent, but at the annual town board meeting in January. Appoint either the home enforcement officer or the highway superintendent. I know those are the detailed things that take so much time because of the domino effect. Um, and looking how it impacts, it's not just like, oop, let's just make the change. It's looking at the potential domino effect. The big thing I say, see with that, you've got two planning board members on the zoning commission. It's the planning board that meets monthly. And every month, those planning board members have their LURs right there. And that's what they go by, either on what's on the form or the physical document. They're the ones that recognize if there's an issue that needs to be addressed. Don't say, oops, we should take a look at that topic. And it's two planning board members that work closely with it, that are on the zoning commission. To do the research and see what makes sense. Ultimately, the town board has the authority to make the change.
They should, right, but they should bring that attention to the town board. And let the town board deal with it. And there's, there's other companies, there's association of towns where you get that information, where that information is gotten. I just think it'd be more streamlined and smoother, and that's my opinion, I.
And, and as far as zoning commission, it's the act, it probably would be a better called the committee than a commission. But in nineteen eighty-nine, that's my recollection of when it was established as a zoning commission. And so the intent has basically been an advisory board that will do the. The, the, the work, the research, the footwork. Instead of taking the time from town board members who are working on contracts with Huguen County Water Sewer Authority. Um, water district two, so we're, that's the purpose of the zoning commission, really. And it doesn't have the authority for. I had the suggestion of the zoning commission taking that document, doing it over again. So you don't have all these little attachments all over the place. Fix whatever, change this, adjust that. And present the document as a whole, not with all these little attachments. Because every time they change something that affects that whole document from my end. Because I have to have it, I have Lisa Summers do it for me because I don't, we don't have time.
How many hours and money does it?
It takes three hundred dollars just to send out the notices. Because I have to send them certified return receipt to surrounding towns, villages and special entities. And of course, we have the Swigaw County and Wayne County on both sides of us. I have the Village of Red Creek that touches the town of Sterling, Village of Per Haven, senior housing, parks and racks. I have Huguen, or, um, Swigaw County planning and clerk. Wayne County planning and clerk. Two thirty-nine committee. Huguen County planning and the clerk. Got to send it to the attorney. Then I've got, you know, people asking questions that I've got a. I'm, I'm just going to use those, not that they have questions about it, but the overlay. Could you tell me about the overlay? Here, I'll email it to you. You know, it's just, it's just a lot of, that's why with, with Joan, I said, why don't you just take that document? Revamp the whole thing. Instead of doing this, well, let's just change this, the stormwater into two words or one word. It, that throws everything off. That's a waste of time. If you're going to change it, change the whole document and be done with it. Until something comes up like the overlay. And something like that happens, of course, you're going to change the document. But for this little pity stuff, it's ridiculous. It's a waste of resources. But if they want to, if they want to redo the whole thing, like change the cover page and everything else, yeah, it should be done about every ten years. This is the tenth year next year. Cause it was two thousand fourteen. Right, right. So we're really talking about two different issues with leases, and it's legitimate, which is why we did, what? I think presented seven or eight different potential amendments, um, about a year ago. So instead of it doing piecemeal, looking at doing multiple potential amendments. But do the whole document, right, or get it.
I would say that.
Updated.
Get a new committee. Instead of the same people that did it originally. Get a new committee, send a new committee and make that their goal to rewrite it and do the updated version. With, uh, you know. And your, every ten years, more than a committee will impress a lot with new ideas and. Does it that way?
I mean, there's a lot of issues that do need to be addressed and that I agree that things need to be proactive, but also it is. A lot of hours done, you know? And to have like, what would happen if there were actually more people on the committee? You know, to be able to bring more, you know? Um, viewpoints on that, more, more, uh, angles to look at. And then be able to do every eight months or something to be able to read, you know, if you have to. If you have a certain big thing like the wellhead protection, like maybe having the zoning commission come in. And like Sue and June aren't here right now, are they?
They're not here tonight, Andy's here though, and he's on the planning board. So he's in tune with what we're talking about here. But I don't think it should be done every year. It, I understand that like with the wellhead, absolutely, or the overlay.
Yeah.
Absolutely, that's a big thing. So if they have like in a folder, all these little things.
Yeah.
They could take those little things and like the overlay, put it all together for one shot instead of doing. Every six months or every few months.
Well, it's a waste. Thinking, so we spend one year, I had a, I figure, you haven't been on the board though.
Well, you've got two thirds of the board is the planning board, so you're giving that. Power members with the planning board can be an outside, like outside people that are not.
True.
Maybe one member of the planning board, one member in this, okay. Should be, you know, put them together once. Should be, you know, put them together once there's a big project or something for the committee. Interested parties. You know, different. Different.
Okay, if you ask a question.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't wanna rain on anybody's parade, but. I, I think we have a lot of people that are interested in our L U R maintaining the document. The other thing that we have are a few people that really wanna work on that. And I think that's how we developed into the situation we have now.
Mm-hmm.
Now, here are three different things going. But I'd say if, if there's a bias that's coming out of the zoning commission. You know, you can address that by inviting more people to participate on the zoning commission. And it doesn't, it would be a subcommittee, I'm assuming is the subcommittee of the planning board, right?
The zoning commission technically is an advisory board that answers to the town board.
Okay. Well.
But.
However, the process is. Um, I, I hear good things about getting more people involved. It's just a challenge to find more people to get involved. I don't. You know, so I think when it comes to bias or any of the other things that go on that are questionable, certainly, that's why we have hearings. That's why a legislative body has a hearing. And if there's something that's irregular in the zoning law or in what is presented as information. Uh, to be considered by the legislative body. Well, it should surface in the hearing. Thanks.
No, we gotta, gotta do this. I just let Rick speak because he's on now.
I'm good looking.
Well, Dan's planning board.
All right.
All right.
No, go ahead. No, I'm good. Okay. Water district. Three lead, just to say, I guess, anybody have any other question on energy?
No.
Now, we have to review the seeker for extension of water district one. Yes, that is. Okay, so this is for the extension of water district one. Will the proposal proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? Next one, no?
No.
Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of the items? Right. Will proposed action impair the character quality of the existing community? Will proposed action have an impact on the environmental character that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? Will proposed action result in adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkway? No. Will proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy? And it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conserv- conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will proposed action impact existing public private water supplies, public, private wastewater treatment? And waters.
Look, that.
Private water supply for their use.
No, or small.
Yeah. Will proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic or geological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No. Will proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources, example wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, or fauna? No. Will proposed action result in increases in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. Will proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No.
That's it?
Okay. Same.
That's it.
All right. Can I get a motion that says sport enters an executive section to discuss pending litigation and invite the code enforcement officer in the executive section?
I'll make that motion. I'll start hearing that.
Karen. Yes, Lee.
Yeah.
Karen.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, that's number six. Okay, so we did close the executive session and we made the motion Charlie's second. Karen's not feeling well and had to leave. E fifty-nine, okay. Sorry, it was on.
Okay. I get a motion to pay the audit vouchers.
How's that now? Lee?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yeah.
Joan? Yes. Scott.
Yes. I get a motion to award the fuel bid to U D. For all. All fuel.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
Lee?
Yeah.
Charlie?
Yeah.
Joan? Yes. Scott.
Yes. I get a motion to appoint Tanya Crowning Shield as deputy registrar.
I'm making a motion, I'll second.
Ruth.
Yes.
Charlie?
Yeah.
Joan? Yes. Scott.
Yes. Wanted him motion for this, you might discuss part. For the commissioner.
Uh, what, there is anything, so I'm, you know, good from now on, I'm waiting for her. But I hope, yes, I'm.
Good.
The motion to appoint somebody to the Q County Parks and Trails Commission.
I'm gonna make a motion. To, uh, first of all, I'm going to withdraw my letter of interest for the position and make a motion that we appoint Karen Thompson to the position as a member of the Q County Parks and Trails Commission.
Well, you have kind of talked when she's not here, say that.
If you did say. Two sections through her head.
Okay, make that motion.
Lee?
I'm gonna abstain.
Charlie?
Yes.
Joan? Yes. Scott.
Yes. I get a motion to close the public hearing on the extension of Water District number one.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Lee?
Yeah.
Charlie?
Yes.
Joan? Yes. Scott.
Yes. I get a motion that the seeker for the extension of Water District one will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Lee?
Yeah.
Charlie?
Yeah.
Joan? Yes. Scott.
Yes. So if the disgust, um, the power request to extend the Water District one for tax map number two point oh oh dash two point two nine point one. Um, the petition is sufficient?
Yes.
Yes? Whether all properties and property owners within the proposed extension are benefited, yes? Whether all the properties and property owners benefited are included within the limits of the proposed extension? Yes? Whether it is in the public interest to grant in whole or part the relief stock? Yes. A potential resolution continued, um, extending Water District number one pursuant to town law article twelve, resolution twenty-three dash.
Whatever it is.
Then we drink or whatever. Extending town of Sterling Water District number one pursuant to town law article twelve, whereas Sterling Water District number one was established by Sterling Town Board Resolution number two thousand fourteen dash oh nine three on March seventeenth, two thousand fourteen. And whereas a petition of Janine Wirkachinsky Yates along with a map plan and report have been prepared in such manner and in such detail as to herefore been determined by the town board of the town of Sterling relating to the extension of the existing town of Sterling Water District number one in said town to include tax map number two point zero zero dash two point or dash two nine point one known as sixteen two eighty-four Ontario Source Drive. And where such petition map plan and report have been duly filed in town clerk's office in said town. And where a said map plan and said report were prepared by C two A B an engineering per building license by the state of New York showing the boundaries of the proposed extension of the district. The general plan of said system and report of the proposed method of operation and whereas an order was duly adopted by the town board of the town of Sterling on May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three. Reciting the filing of said petition map plan report and approval proposed boundaries, the proposed extension of the district that no capital expenses nor borrowings would be necessary. The cost of the typical property owner included in the extension, the fact that the petition map plan and report describing the same were on file in the town clerk's office for public inspection. It's the all other matters required by law to be stated and scheduled a public hearing for June twenty-sixth, two thousand three at seven oh five P M, at which time the said town board would meet to consider such petition map plan and report and to hear all persons interested in the subject, they're considering the same and to take such actions against them as required or authorized by law. And whereas such order was duly published and posted as required by law and whereas a public hearing on said matter was duly held by said town board on June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three at seven oh five P M on that day. Instead of hearing and full discussion of the matter having been had and all persons desiring to be heard, having been duly heard in support and or opposition to the petition and after due consideration and whereas pursuant to said petition, it is in the intent of the petitioner to construct the entirety of the water system improvement solely at own expense. And whereas permission to the state comptroller to create such district is not required because the cost is not benefic- is not financed by bonds, notes, or other evidence of indebtedness and whereas the town board declared itself lead agency and said action is an unlisted action under seeker. We completed a short environmental assessment form and now upon evidence given upon such hearing after due deliberation and upon motion of.
Who wants to make this?
Wants to make a motion.
I'll make that, I'll keep. I'll second.
Seconded by Lee Shortslip is hereby resolved, determined and ordered that the petition has been signed and acknowledged as required by law and is otherwise sufficient. And that the notice of hearing was published and posted as required by law. That all property and property owners within the proposed extension are benefited thereby. That all property and property owners benefited are included within the limits of the proposed extension. And it is in the public interest to extend said Water District number one in the town of Sterling pursuant to subject petition and accompanying map plan and report and that the town of Sterling as lead agency hereby determines that the proposed action will not result in any significant environmental impacts and issues of negative declaration under seeker and the town supervisor is authorized to sign part three of the short environmental assessment form. And it is further resolved, determined, ordered that the extension of the existing town of Sterling Water District number one is set forth and said map plan and report be approved and such extension shall be founded and described as set forth in exhibit eight and it is further resolved and ordered that the boundaries described are intended to include all properties within said extended boundaries as shown in the map on file in the town clerk's office. And it is further resolved and ordered that all expenses under the pond, the extension of district shall be the sole responsibility of the owner of the premises. Within such extension and no public funds were or will be expended for that purpose and all such expenses shall be paid prior to hookup for the system and it is further resolved and ordered that the user cost for the Water District extension shall be comprised of the annual operation and maintenance cost charged by the state of town of Sterling to all Water District number one residents, property owners. And the water debt service payment annually also the same as the other Water District number one residents and property owners. And it is further resolved and ordered that the town clerk is hereby authorized and directed to file a certified copy of this resolution and order to be duly recorded in the office of the clerk of the county of Fuga, New York and such clerk shall also within ten days after the adoption of this order have a certified copy thereof to be filed in the office of the State Department of Audit and Control Albany, New York in accordance with town law section one ninety-four.
Lee?
Yeah.
Charlie?
Yes.
Joan? Yes. Scott.
Yes. Anybody else like privilege of the floor?
Um, Janine, I want to thank everybody for all the time and, you know, spending with all of us. I know you probably went home. And I appreciate Saturday raining the whole day out. Um, but it was probably painful and I want to thank these people very much for all of the time that went into doing this. And thank the board very much.
You're welcome.
Rich, um, I'd like to, um, make a statement regarding the refusal of Karen Thompson. That I disagreed with her in attendance to the executive order. And I found it inappropriate that an employee of Turtle Co. could sit in the executive session regarding the pending litigation or whatever, uh, regarding turtle code. And if I can have that fixed in minutes. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I guess now I'm gonna make a comment, I was a hold on, but I can't. Okay. Um, I'm assuming there's Z B A minutes right from when they have their meetings. In our first meeting about Turtle Cole and the alleged illegal parking lot, um, we asked that he, that Richard use himself from any discussions regarding Turtle Cole parking lot. At the end of that meeting, the entire board looked at Rich and said, Rich, you need to refuse yourself. And to our knowledge, he is not next meeting, but we went to, we had, he was there doing the same thing that he has been doing all this time. Um, so I just want, I guess that part of it and I am going to be looking at the Z B A meeting and I am going to contact my attorney now because it's not at that point.
Okay, thank you. Karen?
I would just like to point out, Deborah Rose isn't here tonight, but she often comes. She is the chair of the planning board in the village. And in the village, um, whenever they want to have a revision of their land use stipulation, they have a major problem because they'll send it to the village attorney down in Auburn, but he kind of sits on things and they can't get him to draft new regulations for them. And they have no zoning commission. And they have no zoning commission. The planning board isn't willing to take that on and I go to all the village meetings and so they're intending to me to do new ordinances on a number of things and it will languish for literally a year. You know, Deborah has been trying to find consultants who seems to help with that and she will be able to get huge accounting planning on board, but they don't craft ordinances. And so this business of you, you have a desire of the community to regulate something. You, it is generally the practice where you research what the association of towns might have, what sample ordinances might be, what model ones or that's other communities have. You consider that and sit with it. You, you draft it and you, you have to have an in-depth understanding of the existing land use regulation as well. That's what the work is. And Deborah and I have all come up, what a shame that in the village we can't have a zoning commission like those wonderful people who have dedicated, they, these women who have served on this helped draft the original land use regulation. They are extremely familiar with the regulations and they put in the painstaking work of sitting and working through that so that it can be given to a planning board for public deliberation and then given to a town board for public deliberation and ultimately it does go to public hearings. We are a community of three thousand people in the whole township. I change, there are not that many people who have the capability, the patience, and the willing to serve. So I understand that you might want to add to this for good luck finding people willing to serve and I think you should thank these women for their long serve and we often have what's gonna happen when they retire. So that might be a reason if you want to add, start looking around who's willing and able to dedicate them in this kind of work and, you know, the kind of work I've been doing in the community, I'm pretty aware of how few people really want to dig in, read, do a lot of detail for a total lot of meetings. So you're lucky to have your zoning commission.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn? I'll second that.
One picture?
Alright.
One of the neighbors.